All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, May 18, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Introduction to Board Members. To the far left, we have Paul Ametucci, Jerry Graybill, Don Ganarelli, myself, Michael LaRue, and Phil Roy. We're going to open up tonight's public hearing for Site Plan Review Commercial Storage, One Blackmore Road, R 68, 18, Blackmore Road LLC. You guys just want to come up and just give a brief description?
So my name is Kevin Pooleen from Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing Blackmore Road LLC. The subject parcel, as previously mentioned, is Tax Map R 68, Lot 18, within the Rural Commercial Industrial District. The parcel is a little over seven and a half acres in size. Frontage is along Blackmore Road. To the northwest of the parcel is bordered by the Driscoll Brook, and to the southeast is bordered by the railroad tracks. And as some of us found out earlier, the parcel can only be accessed from South Burwick. There's no direct access from Burwick. So the project proposal is to add to the existing use two mini storage unit buildings for a total of about 14,000 square feet, and this is in addition to the licensed medical marijuana cultivation that currently takes place on site. These mini storage units will be 10 wide by 20 deep, and on the second building, which is a little bit smaller, they'll be 10 wide by 40 deep. This project requires two conditional use permits. The first is the land use itself, which is the mini storage units, and then the second conditional use permit is for impact within the 75-foot stream protection district of the Driscoll Brook. There are no waivers being requested as part of the application. So to support these mini storage units, the applicant is proposing two infiltration basins to treat and mitigate stormwater. On the eastern side of the site, the first infiltration basin was added in to treat a little bit of the new proposed impervious surface, but primarily to become in conformance with Maine DEP stormwater regulations for the pre-existing impervious. The site is now over one acre of total impervious, so the pre-existing now is subject to a certain level of treatment as well. The second stormwater BMP is an infiltration basin that treats the proposed impervious surface from the traveled lane and then the roofs of the storage units as well. Each of these, sorry, the second stormwater practice that receives flow from the new impervious surface is, there's two conveyance swales, one on either side of the traveled lane, and this brings stormwater to a sediment for bay for pretreatment and then to the infiltration basin itself. And other utility items, these are going to be prefabricated steel structures, so there is no water required on site or an effluent disposal area as a result of that. Electricity utilities will be provided via overhead. There's a series of utility poles that are on the existing site. The conditional use permit required for the disturbance within the 75-foot stream protection district is for the construction of a conveyance swell. There is no proposed impervious surface within this 75 feet. So the proposed conditional use area is just under 3,300 square feet, and there is a proposed fill of 130 cubic yards over that 3,000 square feet, which ends up being about a foot and a half of grade change over that existing surface. There is a narrative contained within the application package that goes through all of the different conditions for each of the conditional use permit requests, the land used itself, as well as the disturbances within the 75-foot stream protection. The applicant, we have been in contact with Maine DEP regarding the stormwater permit. So we had requested a pre-application meeting with DEP back in February, in between the last board meeting and now, we have heard back from them, and they have waived the requirement for a pre-application meeting due to where the project stands with the town of Burwick. It's a little bit more than what they usually get on pre-application meetings. So now we have sent certified letters to director butters and as well, we have filed in the Foster's Daily Democrat the required notifications regarding this permit, and we expect to be filing the permit within the next week or two. To this point, we have received comment from the police chief. He found no law enforcement issues with the site. I can provide a copy of that letter. That's not something that has been received by the board. And we have also received comment from the fire department. The fire chief is in agreement with the proposed traveled lane widths for truck circulation around the proposed storage unit structures. We are also proposing to widen the entrance to 24 feet to accommodate fire truck movements as well. And the only request from the fire chief was to add a Knox box key access to the gate at the front of the site. At this time, I'd like to ask the board for comments and questions.
If I may, Mr. Chair. How about we just wait for the public comments, and then in old business, we'll ask our questions.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to make any comments, just stand up and state your name and address and your comments. No? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Moving along is going to be approval of minutes for May 4, 2023. We were all here. You were not, so, okay, so we can still do it.
Make a motion. We approve him as written.
I'll second that.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor?
I will abstain.
All right. We have one abstaining. Okay. Moving on to old business, Site Plan Review Commercial Storage, One Blackmore Road, R 68, Lot 18, Blackmore Road LLC.
Familiar.
So I guess...
Now, if we have questions.
Yes.
Yeah. You said that there is, there's no road access from the town of Burwick. It's all South Burwick.
That is correct.
So is South Burwick involved in this in any way? Has there been any notification of them that they're going to have traffic on existing roads?
Other than, other than the coordination with the fire department with the South Burwick Water District, there has not been other coordination with South Burwick.
Okay.
So are you, are you planning to widen the entrance to 24 feet? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What is it currently?
I believe it's, yeah, about 20.
20? Okay. All right. Good.
Mr. Chair, if I may. My, my comments echo Mr. Ametucci's. My concern is, it's great that you've got letters of approval from our police department and our fire department, but if the only access is from South Burwick, it might be reasonable to ascertain that it would be South Burwick that would be responding to either a police call or a fire call to that property. Is that a reasonable expectation, or am I mistaken?
I think...
If it is, would we be within rights to, we have a lot of joint projects going on with South Burwick right now, and just being good neighbors, I think it would be in your best interest to seek that from their public responders as well. Even though it is mutual aid, I just think that's being good neighbors, and they've been nice enough to include us on a lot of their projects and give us a chop on it. The other question I have is, is that road a state road, town road, or private road?
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
Yep.
The access going to it is a private road.
It is. Okay.
If you guys speak up, you gotta speak in front of the mic. It's just for the people that are listening.
Yes, sir.
Hannah, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I know we looked at this a little bit when the project first came about, and we determined that it was not necessary to work with South Burwick, but I don't, and I will double check on this to make sure we don't cross any boundaries, but I don't think there's an issue with it if the board would like to have them weigh in, but it wasn't a requirement as far as like the other joint projects you're doing.
If they have no comment, then I think we at least give them the opportunity to say no comment, but they have been nice enough to afford us the opportunity to, to have a chop on projects that abut our town line. I just feel like it's good business for us to do the same.
Yeah. I will double check and follow up with the applicant if there is an issue with that, but...
I don't think there would. I mean, it's a storage, so it shouldn't add that many trips to that, to that area.
And I think the reason that it wasn't, this was not made a joint project like the others is although Blackmore Road is a private road, that it is entirely in the town of Burwick, although you have to go on South Burwick roads to get to Blackmore Road.
I see.
Yeah, the property itself does.
The entire, the entire parcel is in Burwick. There's no, there's no overlap.
Okay.
Yeah. I was waiting, I was waiting for a good time to interject that. There's no, there's no overlap between where they're going to have any say in the actual project. I do agree that checking with their first responders for mutual aid, just in case there's something else that they feel it wouldn't hurt the project, that's for sure, and it would certainly behoove the applicant to make sure that that's all safety bases are covered. That having been said, it's not really something that the, the Burwick Planning Board would really have anything to weigh, the South Burwick Planning Board would have anything to weigh on.
Also, you know, live, I live actually on the property line. My property line is the South Burwick one, so I'm in Burwick, my neighbor's in South Burwick, and Jerry as well. Actually, Jerry split the baby here. But, so, we know that when there's a fire or police call, it could be South Burwick responding to us as opposed to Burwick. So I think it's a good idea.
That's why I said checking with the first responders may, may be beneficial to everybody and certainly not going to hurt anything, but...
And certainly to your customers. I mean, if you've got people that have stuff in storage there and you have a fire, it's good to know that somebody's going to be there in a timely manner, and if they're more timely than our, our services, that makes the best sense for everyone.
Along with what he said, you know, Burwick requiring a Knox box, South Burwick should know that, that that's there as well.
That's true. More for awareness for their fire department.
Right. Yeah.
I don't see an issue with that.
Great.
Very good. Thank you.
So one other question. We're, we're terming this commercial storage. So is, is that like over the general public, or is it businesses that is storing there?
If you don't mind, I may ask Mr. Robelart here to answer the question about the actual users.
I just don't know the terminology and the distinction between commercial storage and just mini storage.
So my name is Christopher Berry. I'm the president of Berry Surveying and Engineering with Kevin here tonight. So mini storage is a commercial use, it's kind of why we phrased it, commercial mini storage in our application. This is primarily for individuals to utilize for personal storage.
Okay.
Their size as such. So this is, that's different than contractor storage or contractor base, as most of us probably know that. This is for...
Because they are, are large units compared to other units.
They are. That's right. If, those on the sidewalk may have noticed, we did a project in South Burwick, right on the other side of the, the town line, the tracks. There's a number of residential units that have been built there. There's more to come, and Mr. Robelart is trying to capitalize on the fact that they may need to store their belongings somewhere. So that's, that's the proposed use.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I'll just add that that's just how this ordinance specifically calls. It's self-storage. That's just what our ordinance calls it. It's commercial mini storage, but it is what you think of as self-storage.
So is there, is there something for us to do tonight here?
Yeah, the actions?
At this point, no. We're still waiting on engineering comments as far as we wanted to get a seal of approval as far as the, the encroachment in the shoreline zone and for that stormwater stuff. We're still waiting on that. Other than that, I think if no problems arise, we should be good for approval at our next meeting.
Okay.
Good. Thanks, Hannah.
Is that a condition for the partnering town EMS, or is that just good idea club? Are we conditioning that, or are we...
I wouldn't condition it, especially since it's not a requirement.
Just being good neighbors? Okay.
Yeah. So that's something that they can do in the next couple of weeks till we come back.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Kevin, you, Kevin, excuse me, you don't have any problem with talking to South Burwick at all, do you?
Nope.
Okay.
No, and I'd have to imagine that there was probably some level of coordination between the Burwick and South Burwick Fire Department to let us know that there's a hydrant available nearby.
Absolutely.
So I don't, that won't, probably will not be a, will not be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Chair? Yep. You guys speak. Yeah. Thank you.
So we customarily work in New Hampshire. We do a few projects in Maine. Does the board need to continue this to a certain date, or how does that process work?
Hannah, you want to?
Great question. I don't think there's a formal continuance. I think we just, you've closed the public hearing. We've heard the application tonight, and it will come back at the next meeting when we have all the material we need.
Okay.
I don't think there's a formal action at this point.
All right. Great. And Hannah, you mentioned this has gone out for third-party engineering review?
Yes, it was.
Who did that go to?
It hasn't gone out yet.
Oh.
So I will let you know when I set it up.
And who does it go to typically?
The last project that we've done, I think we've done a little bit of transition as far as who we work for engineering with here, but the last project that we're currently reviewing went to civil consultants.
Okay. Jay Stevens.
So yes, that's our first go.
Okay.
Is hopefully with them.
So if, if you need anything from us digitally to send to Jay, just feel free to ask. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, Mr. Berry, did you guys submit a digital copy of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Originally? Okay. So then, and they've not made any changes since?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Then you, then we don't need any updated schedules.
Okay.
Also, just to clarify a little bit, typically, the next time that we're here together and you're on the agenda, I think we, we move to find the application complete, meaning all the pieces are in there. So I think that's what the next step will be.
Yeah. Application is complete. We'll be accepting the conditional uses.
Yes. Yeah. The application was not complete at the last meeting.
Okay.
We had to find the application complete to schedule the sidewalk and the public hearing.
Got it.
So we did that.
So at the next meeting, we can approve it, approve it?
Yes.
Right. Right.
We'll, we'll be approving or denying the conditional use permits.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy your night.
All right. No new business. I'll open up the public comment for non-agenda items.
Yeah, let's go. For the technical changes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, step forward.
I'd like to ask you something.
Okay. If you guys could come up to the podium, just state your name and your address.
Yeah. My name's Keith Hurd. 136 Rochester Street, Lot 7. I represent Rathbone Lodge, Knights of Pithias, and I'm here to request from the planning board if I could get a zone change, because right now, currently, it's commercial industrial. Just want to change it to village overlay, since we abut the old tannery building, the land of that. And the only reason why we want more zoning is to possibly put multiple apartments upstairs. We have like a 20, 40 by 60, all open up top. So all we need is just a zoning change.
Okay.
And also, we, I've received his email requesting it and passed it along to James. It's in James's hands at this point, to my knowledge.
Okay.
So we will update accordingly, I guess. I don't, I, I'm not super familiar with Burwick specific process for the overlay.
Yeah. I know, so, I don't know if it'll be going in this vote, but it might be going, it might have to go to the next vote in November. But typically, this has been like a once a year, we keep updating this zoning, so...
The voting card's already out as of yesterday.
Yeah. It's too late to get on this one, but it's possible that we can get it on the next one. That being said, that if there's anyone else watching and listening, if you want to get into the village overlay and you are a budding neighbor, you might want to step in with him, so there can actually be some movement on this, because that helps. The more people that want to get involved in this, the better.
Before you dismiss him from the podium, could I get your name again, sir?
Keith Hurd.
Keith Hurd. Thank you.
K U R D.
Thank you.
Do you mind repeating your address, sir?
136 Rochester Street, Lot 7.
All right. We're just trying to make sure we have it written down. It's going to be a minute.
I read off of your view.
Okay.
His email, and I have sent it only just directly to James.
Yeah, you did. Thank you.
Thank you. You do the same. All right. Next, moving on to informational items.
Well, first of all, I know I'm chopped liver now, and you all met Terry, but officially, Terry Wilson, the, the new administrative assistant to planning and code. Oh, my God.
Sounds great.
That's a very angry noise.
I think that's the, trying to go home.
I don't know why I'm going up there, but I need to stop.
Just saying.
So that, I just want to make sure you guys met Terry. We do need to put, do we want to put it to them when they want to put that on the, on the agenda?
Which one?
Worcester.
I guess. I have my list in front of me of everything we have, when.
Okay. Well, I guess I just want to warn you guys, we have like six or eight projects going right now, and another one or two coming in, and so what we're going to be looking at is potentially a couple of kind of heavy meetings, and I apologize for that, but we'll let you know as soon as we can. And put it in your phones, the 15th, 15th, first.
The first, we have a sidewalk for...
The first, we have the sidewalk for Worcester Road. Right?
Sure.
And they might be on the agenda. And yes, that's true.
We have a lot of sidewalks.
That is correct. One next to the dump, too?
The Burwick Iron and Metal.
Burwick Iron and Metal, you guys opted to not do the site.
Okay.
Public hearing is that night. No sidewalk. Sidewalk for Worcester Road on the first.
Yes, and I think the only thing that was, James was up in the air about whether or not he could put Worcester on for the first, is because you will not be here, and he didn't know if Lee J would be able to attend, at least via Zoom.
Lee J will, I believe, be here on the first, because that's, I think, when he's coming in for the, to discuss the zoning change amendments.
Oh, okay.
For the, what are they called?
The land use order.
The standard, performance standards. I think that's when he's coming in. So if that is the case, then yes.
Okay. So would you guys be comfortable with that, do the sidewalk and the hearing for Worcester and do the hearing for Burwick Iron, and we've got a couple others?
When you say six to eight projects, Irish, do you mean six to eight subdivisions, or six to eight just?
Just general projects.
General projects.
Not all subdivisions, no.
Okay.
But, no, I'm not trying to give you a coronary, sorry.
We have been pretty busy on subdivisions.
Yeah. We have two to three subdivisions, probably, currently.
We have Worcester Road, we have Woodland Pond, we have... What do you mean? Does that, was that subdivision I can make today?
I think so. Yes. Two to three subdivisions right now.
So how's your, how's your workload? And I, and I ask that not joking, I'm asking that honestly, like, are you, are you overly task saturated because of that level of work?
Not that she has me now.
Okay. Yeah. Yes.
I'm helping her a lot.
If you'd have asked, if you'd have asked me that last week, I would have, the week before last, I worked 52 hours on the clock, and that was not all that I worked. That was just what I put on the clock. Okay?
Well, the reason I ask, the reason I ask is just, if there's six to eight large projects coming forth, and, and, you know, given your current workload plus that, I know in the past, you know, when we get that many applicants at one time, I know in the past, they have kind of turned the switch off and said, we're going to hold off on issuing any more permits. Are we, are we at capacity, or are we still able to accept new projects?
It is my intention and hope and belief that, yes, I'll freely admit, I'm going to work this weekend, too. Okay? James and I discussed this, he knew there was still going to be a little overlap between the time Terry started and the time that I didn't have to do weekends, because I was told this was four days on, three days off, but that math hasn't worked out so far. But I think because of all the help that Terry has given me this week, and, you know, because of her experiences previous to her employment here, very little transition. The planning board stuff is really more, planning board and procedural, she knows everything else, that by the end of this weekend, I should be pretty much caught up, and I can spend next week finishing getting caught up on violations and phone calls and emails, and then smooth sailing.
I just think it's important for us as a board, and especially for our paid employees in the town, we need to identify what that demand signal looks like if it gets to the point that you are so administratively task saturated that we, that we flip that switch and, and not be afraid to say, hey, we're going to pump the brakes a little bit until we can handle on what we've got. You know what I mean?
I appreciate that. I appreciate knowing that's even an option. I don't think I've ever been in a position, I can honestly say I've never worked in a position where...
We've done it, we've done it before in this town, and that's the only reason I bring it up, and I know, I, I hear the townspeople when they say, wow, too many subdivisions, and, and hey, it's an authorized use. However, we only have so many public servants that work in this town, and if the capacity is such that you are not able to provide the best quality service for the current applicants, I think that's a pretty darn good demand signal to, to flip that switch. So I just want to make sure that that is something that's on the table, and it's something that we consider as, as a board.
I greatly appreciate that, and to be quite honest, I've been here almost six months. It's been, the first month wasn't too bad, the last four and a half have been pretty rough, because I had no real, I had no help, and I was...
So don't be afraid to pop a flare.
All right. Well, now that I know that that's even an option, I will do that if needed, but I really feel confident, and the other thing is, Terry, I don't know how much introduction you've all received beforehand, but since we're, we're live and the public can hear this and see this, Terry comes to us from, she actually worked in the same office I worked in previously. She's very experienced with a very high-volume code enforcement and planning office, and prior to that, she actually has in the past owned her own construction company. So she has a, it wasn't in the state of Maine, though, so she's got to get caught up with the Maine codes, but because she has the same type of general background I have, she is going to at some point, once she's settled in and has really settled into her planning stuff, she's going to start getting certified for code enforcement.
Great.
So that will, you know, it's beginning to look more like Terry and I will be sharing all of our responsibilities fairly equally.
Nice.
She'll be primary point for planning with Hannah, and I'll be primary point for our contractors and homeowners for code enforcement and inspections, but, you know, she can take applications and review them for completeness as soon as they come through the door, and she has been doing that this week, which is how I've been able to get caught up.
Great.
Which is a service I didn't have before. When she gets her LPI, she'll be able to take and issue those plumbing permits without whether or not I'm here. all of our responsibilities fairly equally. She'll be primary point for planning with Hannah and I'll be primary point for our contractors and homeowners for code enforcement and inspections. But, you know, she can take applications and review them for completeness as soon as they come through the door. And she has been doing that this week, which is how I've been able to get caught up.
Great.
Which is a service I didn't have before. When she gets her LPI, she'll be able to take and issue those plumbing permits without whether or not I'm here. And then eventually, hopefully within the next year, year and a half, she'll be certified code and then she can help. I mean, I could even, I could even take a day off and things wouldn't melt down and it would be amazing. Because last week, I was out sick on Monday and then I had to go with Kristi Ravaska on Tuesday, spent most of the day doing MS4 stuff, which is another thing I could mention to you. But so by Wednesday, I was ready to rip my hair out because they, people didn't have access to me Monday or Tuesday. And so by Wednesday, everybody was clamoring and it was just chaotic. But there's something that Kristi Ravaska had pointed out to me because I found it much more interesting than, I'm really such a nerd, but I found it much more interesting than I think she expected, that, you know, there's an option that later on, once, my winter projects, man, I got like five years of winter projects. It's ridiculous. I could get more training in the MS4 area once Terry is certified and can take some of the workload. I'd get more training in the MS4 area, start taking over our MS4 stuff and we can actually decrease our contract with Kristi because I'm a lot cheaper than she is and cut that contract down significantly, still provide the town with the stormwater services they're required to, still have her at our assistance. And that's something that I'm interested in looking to do to save the taxpayers a few bucks. So, but no, I genuinely, you have no idea how much I appreciate that. But I have, I told James, I feel like I have lost 100 pounds this week because the stress is so relieved already.
Good deal.
It's insane how much better I feel about coming to work this week. And I don't think I really have anything, anything else for you guys.
Great.
Oh, can I ask a question of the board that hopefully somebody with some historical knowledge will have? Was it the board that put into place the three building permits if you're on well-inseptic for subdivisions? Or is that an ordinance that was enacted through some other means?
I'd have to do some research on that one.
Yeah, before all of our.
Like growth?
The growth, the growth limitation provision.
I don't know. I've had questions about that, too.
I'm confused, but I'm going to be very transparent. I know growth is uncomfortable for people and I know we need to recognize that and be careful with it. Walking into it from places that worked completely differently, I find it confusing that we will allow unlimited building permits in a project that is on town water and sewer, which is actually more taxing to our resources.
I think the reasoning why is because of the location. Anything outside of town, we want to keep that rural look.
And I understand that.
I think that's why it's there.
And I understand that.
It's been there for a while because it's through the comp plan. That was the whole idea of limiting growth in the R3 area.
I'm just, it perplexes me because as we go and we do these sidewalks, I don't know if any of you guys have thought this way at all, but I'm just want to express to the board how I feel about it because I'm curious about where, I mean, I understand that keeps it by location, but limiting to three a year. I mean, we've got projects with eight or 11. As a homeowner living, when we're walking through these developments and we're looking at these additional developments going in, if I have to choose between losing one summer or three or five summers to concrete trucks and hammering and all the chaos and dust and confusion that construction brings, I want it done and over with so next summer I can enjoy myself. And I kind of worry about, I understand that growth provision. I guess I was just looking for a little guidance from the board, if you all had any as to why that, why the arbitrary number, what have you, or if anybody gave any thought to the impact of making these longer term. Because then the other issue is they put in their top, you know, they put in their bottom coat so that they can get all their utilities and such in and get their trucks in and out, but they're not going to topcoat these roads.
Until it's all done.
Until it's all done. And by the time they get around to topcoating, that base layer is beat all to dog doo doo. And so they're topcoating over this, which is not giving us a really quality, stable paving.
You prompted another interesting thought in bringing up the water in the sewer district. And I guess my question would be, and if this already exists, do we have an impact statement from them in what future capacity they have available? Because I know it's an issue for, I hear the voters loud and clear and I hear the townspeople and the water quality issues we've had as of late. It begs the question, if we can't keep up with the water quality for the current amount of residents that we have, is that a demand signal that we should probably be pumping the brakes? If we can't provide water to the folks we have at a reasonable amount of quality and quantity, should we request a letter from the water district in what they have as additional capacity and what is their threshold? Where is their stopgap and their demand signal to say, we can't, we can't provide any more water because this is where we're at? And the same goes for the sewer district. Because I don't think, at least in my time on the planning board, I have not seen that. And I know we keep approving these, approving these. And every time one comes before, we go to the water district and the sewer district and we're like, hey, guys, what do you think? So piece by piece, they're like, wow, what's a little more? What's a little more? Would it be reasonable to ask them to commit to a, what is your end state? How much water can you provide? How much capacity do you have for sewer?
I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
I really think we should get ahead of the curve ball and do that.
I think we need a five-year plan from them personally.
He's got something.
Jerry's over there.
I got, maybe a little, you're setting in on the comp plan.
Yes.
I think James has some information on that, that they're working on. Because I listen to my wife when she's doing the comp plan stuff. And I think he's looked into that. So there may be something out there we don't know about.
I think it'd be of great value to me.
It's definitely come up in the comp planning process. I don't remember enough about it specifically to have chimed in to give information, but it is definitely something that has come up.
Because they were looking at school district size, you know, how many, they're looking at the water and the sewer.
Schools is another big one, right?
James may be able to come and tell us what he has.
We're actually quite okay in the schools. We're actually within three or four people of, three or four students of what we were in 1990. Let's get that chart back there. I'll tell you. So a school district I know is still fine. Water, I can't speak to. I actually did just go meet with Jay because I wanted to, he's over at the sewer district. One of the things that we're trying to do is put together in-house a developer group. By the way, hi Hannah. We're putting together a developers' package that will have things like street opening forms, road opening forms, culvert forms, street sign, things that we want to be able to give people at the front side so that we're not getting these calls that I still haven't gotten my street sign, how are we doing this? Or, you know, we want them to have everything that they're going to need upfront. And as part of that, I went and I met with Jay and I did do my first actual official tour of the sewer district. And I got to tell you, what he's got going on over there is, in the terms of the kids, hella cool.
They're number one in the number two business.
Exactly. But they've put the tanks that were there from when prime tanning was there to very, very good use. I didn't know they were using bugs to break down septicage, but that's kind of cool, too. But I can't, try Googling them, Jay, if you're watching. I want to see the bugs.
Still want to know what kind of bug.
We want to know what kind of bugs they're using in their little soup. But they're actually, he's actually looking into setting up the other two. He's got two tanks over here set up and he's looking at setting up the other two in this five-part process. So they, I think they have the, they actually have the storage capacity to handle that. And they've actually.
It would be good to get them on the record for what their capacity is.
For what exactly they can do.
Because that helps us. I mean, I don't want to set our developers and future endeavors in our town up for failure if we don't have the capacity and infrastructure to support them. And I think that's something that'd be very valuable for the planning board.
Yeah, also, I just had me talking to a developer a couple of weeks ago who's putting a big project in. And he's saying, why is it that unlike other towns like South Berwick, we don't drill for water here? He said, there's so much water underground here. And South Berwick is so successful in getting water and we're right next to it. We're not drilling. We get it, get through salmonfalls predominantly and have to, you know.
It's cost prohibitive to get that water from the river, treat it, and then get it out to our residents.
Yeah. So, you know, drilling may be something we ought to be asking the water department as well.
I will toss that, lob that one in James's lap.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Jerry?
Now, a couple of questions. To go with what you were saying, Eric, about, you got six or eight things coming, does that include South Berwick and North Berwick projects?
Yes, it does.
Do you know what's going on with the North Berwick project? We were there.
No, I don't.
We can't really talk about it.
No.
But.
I know that.
There's issues.
Well, and I'm thinking.
They have their own issues.
They submitted, they did submit, David Springer submitted a package here, too. But I didn't know if we were still going to stick with joint or if we wanted to.
We are, we are in dangerous territory discussing that, I think, with this many people. I just don't want us to overstep.
Well, no, I was just inquiring of Hannah if that's something that needs to be put before our boards separately because they did deliver a package, which I didn't get a chance to tell her. They delivered a package here. It was like a submittal package. So I didn't know if we were supposed to put them on here. Okay.
Everything was at my meetings.
We would be in the North Berwick meeting.
So then it does, then that does include those. It was only going to be separate. Thank you. Because I forgot to tell her about that. Sorry, sorry Hannah. It's been a little chaotic last couple of weeks. So no, then since we're doing that jointly, it does include, it does include those two.
When we hear from them, we will update the board as far as the process or the progress, I guess.
Here's your package.
I got a bigger package than that. Not a word, Don.
All right, any other informational items?
Hopefully the communication will improve greatly with keeping you guys informed of everything and getting you everything in a timely manner. It's my goal.
We have a running list of all the upcoming projects and we're trying to piece them into agendas and figure that out. So I'm going to pull it up and try to give you a preview.
I told you before, if you need my help, call me.
Yes.
I am retired.
He really is looking for something to do.
Like special needs are not working.
Leave it to the Coast Guard.
Things are on the upswing.
All right.
Yes.
Well, if there are no further items for consideration this evening from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Berwick Town Hall, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right, good night.
What time is it?